Just one more minute, thank you.
Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the council on the City Hall which on Tuesday, on 28th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. A rural call, Councilmember Ben Del.
President.
Councilmember Wayne Dell.
President.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
President Romo.
Here.
Let the agreement indicate the presence of acting city manager Robert XTC and some corporation council which are known as, and that is what's in the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would just like to thank everyone for being patient with us while we got together to this special meeting. There is no acting city manager update, so we'll just go right into the first public hearing.
A first public hearing this evening for the purpose of giving citizens adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the capital plan for the five-year period from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2024.
Okay, we already had one hearing, and I'll just give the council an opportunity if anyone has any questions about the proposed capital plan for Ms. Hightower or Ms. XTC. Okay, seeing none. Is there any comment about the proposed capital plan from the public? Yes, Mr. Romo. Okay, hands to the right please.
So first, or any, Romo, first I have some questions about the capital plan. Number one, on November 20th, 2018, the council authorized the purchase of 15 cardiac monitors slash defibrillators at a cost of $30,000. After this large purchase, why are we purchasing $12,000 of AEDs in the capital plan? Once we receive funding for grant projects, do we call the bonds or pay them back immediately? Can you explain the $265,000 sand screen for dune item? Four, in the current active budget, we expect to receive $396,000 worth of CHIPS aid. In the proposed budget, we only expect to receive $200,000 in aid. Why will we receive significantly less in CHIPS aid next year? With $50,000 in the DPW budget for consulting, why is there an additional $90,000 in the capital plan for consulting? For the $50,000 in improvements to the rec center and the $70,000 in improvements to the backdoor area center, will the work be done internally? If so, are we borrowing for labor expenses or just for supplies and materials? What specific improvements for city hall will be completed with $125,000 for city hall improvements? Where do we plan to put the new cameras that are proposed in the capital plan? Will these be traffic cameras or will they be placed on the beach and boardwalk? I also have some suggestions for the capital plan. I believe the city should use its MTA grants to invest in protective shields for bus drivers. These protective shields are made of a hard plastic and make it almost impossible to assault a bus driver if used properly. Nationwide, assaults against bus drivers have skyrocketed, and I believe we should take proactive steps to ensure our bus drivers are safe. Both the ICE buses and MTA buses utilize these shields. At a cost of only $2,500 each, this will be a good investment for the city. The city should also replace several pickup trucks in beach maintenance. Based on my experience in beach maintenance, some trucks are not just on their last legs, but being held together with duct tape. In order to protect the safety of our beachgoers and workers, I ask the council to replace these trucks. This investment may even save the city money in maintenance, insurance, judgment, and gas. Finally, the city should replace Park Avenue in between Riverside and National. I think it is one of the worst roads in the city, and when I'm on the school bus, almost all of us kind of jump out of our seats because of the bumpiness of the road. So, I just ask hopefully that my questions can be answered and my suggestions can hopefully be incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you. Side down. Quick.
Okay, the first question relates to the grants. So, what the city does is it leaves grant-funded projects in short-term bands, so that the branch funds come in and choose to pay out the bands that don't amount enough to the budget. The $396,000 in CHIPS, in previous years, the city has had that through the grant fund because it is the fund that pays the tax service, so that is allowed. We are phasing in, we're moving into fully into the capital plan. So this year, you can see half going in and all the rest you'll see the other half going back in, so it's fully in the back, so it's fully in the capital plan going forward. As far as the consulting lines, both operating and capital, there are certain consulting services that DPW employs that are not capitalizable, such as you're doing the bitspecs, you're doing annual plans, things like that you can't bond. So, but rather long-term, design of roads, design of building improvements do have a five-year life and can be put in the capital plan, so they kind of have to try to have a balance between the two items.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Del. Is there a, Mr. Moreno or anyone from DPW here?
Unfortunately, Mr. Moreno couldn't make it, and Mr. Profeseo couldn't either. With that being said, there were a couple other questions I could catch. The cameras for the boardwalk, the boardwalk primarily, and with respect to the beach equipment that you're running, I wish I could remember the name of the specific piece of equipment that is necessary to maintain the new dunes.
Sand screen?
Yeah, it's a piece of equipment also that is designed to travel between the dune and the boardwalk. It's a piece of equipment that we need to maintain.
SCD.
Yes, that was it.
Skid steer.
Thank you, skid steer.
And, yeah, about the rec center and city hall improvements, do you know about that?
With respect to the rec center, it is earmarked for a wall that is in very, very poor condition down there, and there are a myriad of other improvements as well, but that's the primary line of desire. We are in question.
City hall improvements?
Part of the lobby, but city hall is in a rapid state of deterioration, so at this point, we're just going to get it very proactively.
And, okay, hopefully you conclude my suggestions in either this year or plan for maybe next year with our MTA grants move that around. And also, do you know where the errata sheets are or what are the errata sheets?
We've prepared an errata sheet because Councilwoman Moore is still tallying it up right now, so we'll be open to an errata sheet this evening, I hope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else about specifically the capital plan? Okay, seeing no hands, closing hearing.
A second public hearing for the purpose of giving citizens adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the current general summary of the proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
Okay, first I'll give an opportunity to the council. Any questions for Christie or, I'm sorry, Ms. Hightower or acting city manager at XTC?
The council currently prepares several questions, and so I'm just going to list some of the items. First, it was a question with respect to page 49, the maintenance contracts within the municipal building. There were questions with respect to the actual contracts. If you could identify that for us, that would be helpful. That's the first question. The second question is with respect to page 50, the information technology, A1680, also maintenance contracts. Page 53, A6410, there were questions with respect to contracted services for publicity. And then, starting to go back to page 49, A1430, questions with respect to the contracted services for civil service. Can you just address those questions? That would be helpful.
I can start with the public, see if that's creative. I have some concepts.
Okay, so what portion of that would be creative concepts? Is that the whole?
I don't have that. I can tell that that's a contracted service coming out of the yard. Yeah.
So the actual marketing campaign, in addition to the creative concepts, advertising services?
Right, internal states of inspection, basic expenses that we have in the yard, mostly related to, I think, collect.
So, A1620, there's a building maintenance contract that that department, this is all the maintenance contracts in almost every building in the city, so it includes HVAC, includes boilers, and so we can give a list of all of these contracts. I hope that I do what I'm doing.
I can actually answer that question. Some of the contracted services that would be in that line, my understanding would include AC service repair, boiler inspection repairs, cooling towers for AC inspection repairs, the chiller inspection repairs for all the city buildings. It also includes elevators, we're here, the ice arena, senior center inspection, as well as repairs. It also includes inspection repair, fire alarms, smoke alarms, fire suppression systems, fire extinguishers through all city buildings, four-door irrigation, seasonal turn on and off repairs to lawn sprinklers, solar recreation, and day drive, and the senior center, as well as the soup kitchen vegetable garden, Veterans Park, and Clark Street Park. So, that's all included in that line, is my understanding.
Does anybody else have any questions? So, okay, that was a collective group question that we had. Also, the information technology?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that line has the different maintenance contracts for our different hardware and software systems, including the accounting system, the tax system, some phone systems, some police systems, there's probably about 20 to 25 different contracts that are connected to that line.
Yeah, I knew that throughout the budget, there's telephone or telephone services. Are we converting at any time to some of the internet services that are, I've looked at, I know a lot of other halls in the corporations are making conversions to additional?
Well, that, we had looked at that around 2012, but we learned from Sandy when we were completely disconnected from the mainland that I'm opposed that phone system would be very problematic for us in the time of emergency. During Sandy, the next day, we had our internal home system back on, which was very important that even the building department, the police department, the fire department were able to dispatch and to talk to each other, even internally, even though they weren't, we had very limited opportunities to be outside the world. So, at the time, right before Sandy, we were looking at going to a system, but then after that experience, we decided that is not the approach.
Thank you.
And the last one is the civil services contract.
Yes.
So there's two items in there. One is non-employee progress for when the civil service is ending, and the other piece of it is the tracking and reporting for the CCA, for the oil care, Obamacare. So you'll see an increase. The prior years, it was just the CCA amount, we'll see an increase next year because of the land.
But the prosecutors have a separate line, so is there any reason why some of that money is included in that line?
No, not.
Does the department have their own line of 54457? I know the problems here, a lot of people, I don't know what's in there.
Do you have a question as far as budget?
So last year, $18,500 was funded, this year it's $26,500, so it's going to increase to $80,000.
Well, there wasn't a reason to base the impact on that as far as contract that's involved. I don't have any.
Thank you.
Okay, I think there was a few questions that we had, we didn't know about specific contracted services. Does anyone else in the council have any questions for Ms. Hightower or Ms. XTC? Okay, seeing none. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments they'd like to offer about the proposed budget? Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Lord Lester Long Beach.
Thank you.
I'm looking through the budget, and to be honest, I really don't understand a lot of stuff. I can understand why we don't want questions asked, because it just seems like smoking there is in there. Can you explain to me how, when we're looking at the exempt tax roll, how it went up $150 million with two pieces of property that the city acquired? What two pieces of property did the city acquire that took $150 million off the tax roll?
Would you like to answer? Are your questions over?
Sure, sure. And that, when you look at that, you also see that with the hospital, they used to have exemption of $61 million, now it's only $8 million, so that has, that should be an additional almost $52 million. So, what has happened basically is we went from $379 million worth of exempt property to now $531 million of exempt property that we're not collecting taxes on. I don't quite understand that. By the same token, it looks to me, and I can't quite figure to get these figures right, it looks like our tax value, our property value, went up 0.77%. And if the property value did go up that, I mean, if you look at the equalized total assessed value, that went up 9.175%. Now, according to that, that's $6,510 million for the city of Long Beach, but I understand that that's kind of a fictional number, and the total assessed value of Long Beach is now $229 million, and that's, I understand the percentage, so I'm not quite sure. That none of that is explained, but what I do notice is that this state now owns, went from brief properties last year at $24 million of exempt property to seven pieces, to $73 million worth of exempt property. Now, all of this property that's becoming, that's going on the exempt roll is coming out of the taxpayers. It's no longer collecting taxes, so it's hurting the economy of the city, of the tax collection of the city. So it really, when you're talking about $150 million that we're losing of assessed value, $150 million is about the bottom line coming down. Okay, I'll go on to, what are these? The beach revenue, the beach revenue is something I also can't figure out. You're projecting for next year $4.4 million of beach revenue. Now, last, in 2018, you projected $4.35 million. The actual was $3.88 million. The year-to-date, by 3/31/18, was $1.85 million. The year-to-date, 3/31/19, is $1.73 million. Using the exact same formula, we should be collecting this year $3.62 million, you had it projected at $4.275 million. That's a shortfall of $647,000. Nowhere in the budget is that accounted for. I don't know how that's going to be made up, especially when we're projecting almost $800,000 more than we actually collected last year.
Okay, I'm going to let our tax assessor answer those really big questions about these in properties here in the city of Long Beach. So, the first one was?
I'm sorry, we have a couple more questions. So, I'm cut off.
It is your time, everyone's entitled to the three minutes, and now we're going to answer all your questions without interruption.
Did you knew city of Long Beach parks were actually the beach, the west end and the middle town, if they were ever on the tax roll or any of them? You were asked, and somebody did create the service for the, the debtors.
There was a lot of issues that we didn't have parcels in, like they had the separate parcels. So that was taxable?
So that was the three exempt properties that went to set up?
Yes.
Okay, and what about the hospital?
The old building was revalued and made partially taxable, which is partly taxable, but the support shown a lot is still partially, based on any plan.
So were you thinking $2 million taxable?
No, the property was valued at a full market value of $10.
But it was $61, really?
Yeah, that was, yeah, when that property was looked at, a lot of the years, not even just the, the dollar.
But we were taxing?
No, it was fully.
Could you explain the $379 million per exempt property, and now it's $531 million? I think Mr. Lester said it.
The exempt properties, also that includes the few beach parcels that are added, and all the life of parcels became exempt because of life reform act, fourteen years.
Now, just that you have city on the park.
City on, city on is the beach, the beach is there.
But only two?
But, Mr. Lester, you asked, we went from $379 million exempt properties to $531 million exempt properties, and I believe that's what is explained, so a lot of that is lipo, came off the rolls statewide, is that correct?
Lipo, nothing, this is city on the park.
Yeah, the city, that's just nobody can change the beach.
The beach, that we only took two parcels of beach.
And they weren't on the roll the year before, I had, yeah, the beach parcel for now, for more, for number value, sorry, had one this year, it was after the sale of that. Second question, third, is the state exempt properties or the life of parcels that from the state will have to exempt, only 2% more than the year before, so if you can't go on the roll, is there a special assessment starting this year?
So that's $74,000. I'm not the $50 million guy.
It's similar to a pilot where the, the only 2% more than the year before, so they're taking, as, for state roll.
Is that a special assessment beginning on $250,000?
It's $290,000.
$290,000. That's lipo. And is it correct to say we're losing $150 million of assessed value, as Mr. Lester said?
It's being chipped, it's partially 70%, but based on the life of love, they've only 80% more taxes than the year before.
Right, because they'll always pay sufficient.
Yeah, so it's, they're probably doing 80% every year on each parcel.
Right, okay. And acting city manager, would you like to speak to beach, beach revenue?
Sure, I know we've brought over several times now previous meetings, but once again, prior to the new place, the line, a lot of averages, so there is a parent level risk gear plan, which is the barrel, and also that combined with a very aggressive marketing campaign that we've implemented, that we feel is going to restore our beach revenue numbers, that where we look at it, sure did. We've been discussing that, that campaign several weeks now, I know Pete Pepper has spoken about it on a number of occasions. I can't tell you that in terms of the rollout, the visual, like I remember, has, is in full force of effect right now, we are all socially aware. In fact, just before I came up to this meeting, I saw that we are on the home page of the MTA, right now, for our beach pass complex test. So this is just the beginning, we have TV spots coming out in the next several weeks, various channels, we'll be speaking, and certainly more colleagues will be on this topic. I don't, I haven't shown it up before, but that is a combination that's really long life.
You're depending on that $800,000.
I think we achieved that, we are going to, and we had a fantastic weekend so far, so we're pretty good.
You sold more taxes than?
We're ahead of where we were last year, so we haven't gone over the numbers we can celebrate, because we've just got them, but we've developed quite a nice cushion already, just from a holiday weekend.
Do we now have to give less here now that the rainy season is, here is out, do we now have to give on the beach last year with actuals?
The actuals, yeah, we have the actuals last year.
What is the actual question?
I, I, around, I hope it was, Christine was, what was it, on second 20 for the beach, in terms of beach passes, and I think it'll be 25 for our LAR combo.
So, do you have any, you predicted it at 4.25?
Right, last year was projected at 4.8, this year we have it at 4.9. Okay, next from the guest, Mr. Ben Del. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Santa, Long Beach. Quick question in regards to the budget. Have there been any modifications made since the published budget that the residents could review for tonight's meeting?
I believe the council is going to have an errata sheet by the end of this evening.
So how does that work with public input on open hearing, for vote?
We take your public input and decide if we want to change lines and?
And then the vote happens tonight?
Yes, the whole vote's going to happen tonight.
So how can we give a public comment if we can't hear, complete public comment without hearing or seeing the errata sheet?
I mean, we take your input, and then we decide how we're going to implement it to the budget, that's how it's been done.
Okay, my only concern is that people aren't looking at the budgets, and they're looking at a line item, and if that line item is now changed, they may change their perspective of have a question or approve or agree on public input on the budget. So, just a thought. One more thing on beach pass, so no beach access, just live by my whole day. The way the modifier gets hard numbers on beach revenues is possibly going more digital, and credit cards with paper receipts for day passes, I mean, we still give out the hard plastic receipts for day passes that are similar, the ones we give people that should last long on, all summer actually. So if you just switch up the day pass with paper receipt with a stamp on it, less plastic, being used, high cost, less money, and if you go digital, it could be less lost, just an idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else can speak on the budget? Mr. Romo?
So at the last budget hearing, I asked the city council to release any budget amendments at least 48 hours before, so that residents and stakeholders and those who were interested could actually have time to analyze the potential changes to give their feedback on them. I think that last year, I called releasing the errata sheets, when the meeting began, I said, I have never seen a budget process this untransparent, but unfortunately, again, the city- But unfortunately, again, the city has topped this. The city has outbid itself. And as, there are no budget amendments that have been released to the public before the hearing is closed. And I think that that is, is very sad, that we who are interested or informed would not be able to comment on any budget changes, and I have just never seen anything like it, similar. If you see the school district, the school district has had three separate, um, budgets, they have continuously amended their budget, have meetings in public, they have gone around to community organizations to give presentations, and yet, we're still tallying up our budget the night of the vote? I mean, what kind of municipality does this? It just seems that something, that this is not working, that this administration needs to make changes, and that we need to say, it's time for a change, it's time for some transparency in our budget process, and it's time to listen to the citizens. And I think that before you vote on the budget, you should allow everybody to speak about the budget numbers. So, I don't know when you're gonna release them, if it's tomorrow, then it's tomorrow. If we need to keep this meeting open, then we need to keep this meeting open, but this cannot just go under the rug, any potential changes, any smoke and mirrors, this, I, it's just, I'm really at a loss. I really did not expect the city to not even release its errand sheets before the meeting. I also wanted to touch on, um, Mr. Aggis, DC's clinical of beach revenues, and how he said, with an impressive marketing campaign and law of averages, I say a 33% increase in Long Island Railroad beach revenue, and a 15% increase in general beach revenue is unrealistic. And to say that with, even with a marketing campaign, I just think it is completely wrong to assume this, and we're gonna be eating into our reserves, and we have very, very little reserves, and it's just gonna keep hurting the city, and this is, this administration is truly driving the city into the ground. Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak on the budget? Yeah, please again.
Good evening, Karen, from Long Beach. I have a question about the projected fund balance of the general fund. Back in 2018, we ran at a deficit in the general fund of, to the, of $5.2 million. So that means we were over budget, or it's my understanding of, you were over budget in June 2018 by $5.2 million. Back in January, I asked if we were going to be on budget. The acting city manager at that time told me for June 2019, we were going to be on budget for the general fund. Back in April, I asked the acting city manager if we were going to be on budget for 2019. I did not get a response. Back on May 7th, I asked what the projected general fund balance was going to be for June 2019, and I have not yet to receive a response. So my question is, for this current fiscal year, for the general fund, are we going to have a loss or a gain?
I know that we have mentioned this quite a few times, because also, side of the meeting report.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
We have discussed this previously, it's also been cited in the meeting report, we are projecting a deficit for the, for the year 2019.
Is it a secret?
I just told you we're projecting a deficit.
What is the deficit of the general?
Approximately $1 million.
A $1 million deficit, so we are over budget by $1 million for this fiscal year?
No, we are under budget on revenues by about that amount.
Is it semantic? We are...
A, a deficit is a combination of being, a difference in revenue and...
So, so we are, we are, so we are not eating our budget by $1 million this year? So that means, the, the general fund balance will be, instead of 3.1 million at the end of June, June 18, will it be 2.1 million approximately? Thank you.
Anyone else guess? Mrs. Adelson. Good evening. Amy Mantras, please.
From ALC 74 Harmon Street. I'm sitting here and I'm listening to everything that people are saying, and I understand that you have an errand sheet, from what you say. So I'm gonna ask you, because I feel like I sat up there, other council people have sat up there, we've always had the errand sheet out there, so that people could make comments. So I'm gonna ask you to reconsider opening up the errand sheet for the public, so that people could make comments on that, and just make it part of the presentation, because otherwise, I feel like, I just think, I just think in, um, true spirit, it would be better to do something like that, so I'm asking you to please do that. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Mr. Goson?
Good evening, Long Beach. I just don't have the grasp of detail of the budget document that Roy or Cameron or maybe you, so I'm just gonna speak about some general observations pertaining to it. Uh, the one, of course, being the failure to put out an errand sheet, now I've been coming to these budget meetings for a long while now, uh, never do I recall there not being an errand sheet out for the public to review ahead of the public comment period. I don't know how on earth you'd consider voting on this budget, and taking comments from the public, what's lying behind, we have no idea what, what you guys, what, what the fun is with budget, we can be getting up here, getting a year about something that's really stripping from the budget, so it's, uh, it's pretty pathetic. Uh, maybe if you guys go over to work sessions, as many have advocated for, uh, this problem could have been avoided, uh, but this is where you're at, and I think it's, uh, safe to label you guys the most dysfunctional government in city history. I also wanted to know, how is council member Diamond had answers to certain questions that other council members of the tier notch have no answers to? Uh, I'm just wondering, is she more diligent than the rest of you guys? Will she enjoy somehow a greater level of access to, uh, information than other members of the council? And the other thing is, I couldn't hear Mr. Klein's explanation about the increased value of the city-owned parcels, but I know if you look at the document, that the city's, uh, the city asset, uh, assets have gone up by about $150 million. Now, does this increase in asset value have any impact on the city's capacity to borrow? Meaning, are we inflating our assets so that we can increase our borrowing, uh, threshold?
No, the city's, um, constitutional debt margin is based on the taxable value, all things, and also the property strike.
And what I, I want to ask about section seven of the resolution, it says, uh, this resolution shall be determined to repeal any consistent provision of personnel schedule or roster. Do we know if there's been any inconsistent provision that this, uh, section seven will, uh, clean off, so to speak? Have we identified any?
There's no other questions. No hands, there's no reason to sit here.
I see some catchall phrase, you're growing out of it. Relax, I'm putting current public error at it.
It's a standard before you play the catchall. Correct.
So would you throw in surplus land minimums in this resolution for help?
With regards to the question about Councilwoman Diamond, I would just say that, um, collectively, we came up with the same question, and I'm assuming that Councilwoman Diamond asked that question previously. We all have, she was reading off her phone, if you saw, so I'm assuming she asked Commissioner Morando or someone else in the administration, but we all have the ability to ask as many questions to whatever we want at all times. Yes, Ms. Justman.
This question is from, was it dressed in Long Beach?
Thank you.
Question is normally for, uh, Mr. Plummer. Regarding the increase of, they're going, about 127 days, regarding the tax base, is that primarily due to all the home name rates and the new assessed values? Because I remember, uh, in, in Mr. Aggis' presentation, when he said, our western buckles are now worth $800,000. In some cases, they're going for more, so is that, that is based on this new tax roll that people are talking about, the new home, the new home value?
Uh, the increase to assessed value included new home construction, as well as commercial properties, I revalued the transco pipeline last year, I received the advisory appraisal from, uh, state, so we valued the pipeline. Uh, there's key old commercial properties, such as self-storage, uh, there's an apartment building that did a full renovation, uh, there's other things on the construction that were partially valued, uh, there's a couple exempt properties that became taxable, uh, so the combination will be...
I just wanted to make sure that, uh, people that rent their homes, that they understand that our homes are now taxed, of those, at these new fire rates.
Uh, all homes are, or should be valued at what the market would pay for that house, uh, so it's based on market.
Thank you. Mr. Deloy.
Mike Deloy, Long Beach, do you want? What I, what I had, and there's just some information, so we all could look at what I'm gonna ask some question on, is very, it's a very simple question, I believe. Attached is the hospital medical costs in the budget, which have increased approximately 2.4 million in the last four years. Current estimates for family medical coverage are $25,000 annually and $12,000 for individual coverage. If the numbers that are stated are off, you can correct me at the end of this question. What sort of employee contributions are currently in place? Does anyone contribute to the cost of their employer providing health care? Other municipalities have implemented some sort of relief to the taxpayer. Question, do employees hire, what will they contribute? And there's four categories, as you can see, uh, and that one, who is fired, CSCA in exempts. My last question, it does not have to do with this particular subject. When will the crosswalks be started on Park Avenue, and where will it start? My hope is between Long Beach Road and Walton Boulevard, I have mentioned this, or suggested this in the past, now approaching a busy season. Last question, if Miss McInnes is correct, that we are possibly headed for a, an operating deficit, will that be financed through deficit financing? Thank you.
With respect to contributions, Deloy, uh, we have contributing, we have exempt employees since 2012, I think contributing 10%, and Paramerson, the fire department contributing 10%, and new CSCA employees contribute 10%, also incorrect. Um, with respect to the crosswalks, I had preliminary discussions with Commissioner Morando about that, but admittedly, till this budget process wrapped up, we haven't, uh, we haven't provided any specifics about where that process would begin in terms of reclaiming. What other questions?
So, uh, just to also go back to the first question, the current cost of abandoned land for the city is just under $29,000, not $25, and projected to be just over $30,000 for the city of 2020. Uh, and as far as the deficit, that will not be financed to deficit finance, I think.
Okay, so I must, to serve as my estimate, as far as health care costs, are the family coverage?
Current family coverage is $2,413 a month.
Thank you, Mr. Deloy. Anyone else care to speak on the budget? The session?
How do you mention Long Beach? I have not studied the budget, as some of these people have done, so I'm not up here to talk about numbers, but I think, Mr. Ramon, in the beginning, you said that Ms. Moore was still working on the numbers with the errand?
Yeah, that's why we were waiting, we were still...
So not only haven't we seen it, you haven't seen it?
No, no, we were working on it together, and she was just tallying it up for us, and that's why we were 15 minutes late, we were still working until the...
So you have... We were still working upstairs as of 7:13 on...
So you're just, you're typing it up, and everybody has seen it?
I was trying to type right now, I'm literally still making calculations. That's why we were not able to provide information to the public before the meeting.
It seems hard to believe that you can possibly vote on this tonight, when the purpose of this meeting was to let people, uh, make their thoughts known about the budget. There were some very intelligent comments made tonight by several of the people sitting back there, and since you only left three minutes to speak, you had to cut Mr. Lester off before, he said he had other comments. He was talking about many millions of dollars, and he had some very good points to make, as did some of the other people. Three minutes is not enough, and the last minute kinds of things that we're doing here is not enough for a budget of this size, and with the problems that we're having with all of this money. I have asked, as have other people many, many times up here, that we have some kind of community input, citizen advisory board of some sort, so that people like Mr. Lester, who have all that information, and who have taken the time to do the research and the studying, can give input throughout the year, not at the very last minute, before you're about to approve a budget, which is gonna cost the taxpayers an awful lot of money. So please, let the people be part of this government. It all looks like, as somebody said earlier, smoke and mirrors, and the least transparent budget ever.
We think the third mega hearing, where we're taking comments from the public, um, many council members have spoken to each other, uh, in groups, um, or in pairs, and then we came together with, uh, some different amendments, so we are taking in, you know, everyone's comments. If anyone on the floor, and if anyone in the council wishes to incorporate anything that's said in the public, they can make a motion at any time. Um, so I, I, I disagree that it's not as transparent, it's the third public hearing that we've been having, so I would have liked, I think we all would prefer to have an errand sheet ready to go, or like Ms. Moore said, we were working up until the last final minute. So, is there anyone else that would care to come speak on the budget?
They, they only started working, they started...
Nope. Okay. Um, can we close the hearing, but not, since you just gave an errand sheet? Okay, so that, that closes the hearing? The budget?
And what's the resolution on the...
I have one resolution on the adoption of the capital program for five years, July 1st, 2019 to June 30, 2024, close it. Here is the document. I have two, a resolution on the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2019 and into June 30 of 2020, supporting the set forth therein determining and fixing the real estate tax levy. Here is the document.
Suspend it.
Suspend it.
Suspend it.
Let's look at the question first. We've got one here, right?
I have one resolution on the adoption of the capital program for five years, July 1st, 2019, June 30, 2024, close it.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have two, a resolution on the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2019 and into June 30 of 2020, supporting the set forth therein determining and determining and fixing the real estate tax levy.
President Ramo, in light of the fact that today we have just had the opportunity to present an actual errand sheet and share that information with each other, we feel that at this time we're going to table the motion to adopt the budget. So the purpose of presenting the errand sheet is clear, and we need to get it out.
So motion for table item number two?
A second.
Table item number two, count number one.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Make it public now.
I have two to table.
Before, before we, before we close the meeting, we have three days to pass the budget, is that correct?
I mean, it would actually sometimes change.
It would actually sometimes change, we have until Friday, until June 1st.
Make it public now.
Late weekly night, PM, on January 3rd.
Okay.
Do we have a motion closing here?
I will.
I will.
I will. Yes. Yes.
Yep.
I know, I found the following. We're a little bit of everywhere.
So they could have laid off half the workforce just now, they'd know it would have given out. And they would have...